Seven oh seven, call the meeting back to order. We're gonna move on with item A seven. City Attorney, attorney Kylie Finnell is here to present ordinance to amend chapter that three two of the BMC entitled unauthorized camping. I know this is a bit more of a difficult subject, so I kind of run it one by the book. This is a heads up. Anyway, if you want to take us away and sum up where we're at from last time.
This is our fourth study session. And just to kind of get us started off, just want to go back to big picture. The first study session when we talked about this, we kind of went through that MRSC AWC publication that had like sixty something pages, and I was pointing out how the task kind of before you literally only represented one page of that sixty page document. And I just do that to kind of keep, help keep us focused that we're all going to be working on issues related to our unhoused community. I think probably for the remainder of your terms and probably my term here at the city. And that there is nothing that prohibits you from revisiting this ordinance. So if conditions change or more information comes available, or it's just not working with whatever you come up with, we can revisit it. We can make it a goal for next year to continue monitoring it. Or, you know, I just wanted to bring us back to this was one of your goals for this year. It's not a an easy ordinance to get through, and I appreciate all the hard work that everyone's been doing, considering different options and whatnot. But I do just want to remind you that it's not, you know, like speak now or whatever we get now, forever hold your peace, and we can't come back and revisit it. Or, you know, even consider like a phased approach if you're not sure about some, you know, restrictions or something that one of your fellow council members has proposed, or there's not consensus on one part of it, that doesn't mean that that part couldn't be brought up later. So hopefully, we can kind of get to a point where there's consensus on enough items that we can get an ordinance passed that everyone is satisfied with. So, Michael, I think is supposed to be on Zoom, is he? Yeah, there he is. He is been a part of the discussion since we started it and be available if we have any questions. He tried to do what you guys asked of him last time and provided some information. If you remember, we were looking at different ways that available shelter was defined. We were looking at different restrictions that other cities had considered. And we've pulled together some additional information for you to look at with regard to that kind of thing. Just, and that's just kind of where I'm at right now. I don't, we've gone through this, like I said, this is our fourth study session. And so I don't want to start from the top. And I'm happy to either let council president start kind of directing who has comments or where you want to start from here or what, or go through the draft some or whatever you want to do.
Let's say, yeah, I think excellent, excellent recap. I'd like to see us ideally that we can walk away from tonight with something to go on general business. Next week, just give them the time we spent into it. My personal goal, but you know, I understand if we don't get there. But I think we can. So, yeah, quick recap, we had the whiteboard last time. We had general counsel consensus to basically add in, make sure I get this right, from the draft before that, the designated areas where no shelter space was available, the X number of feet from places in here such as schools at all times, regardless of available shelter space. We talked about the definition of shelter space, making sure that was well defined and understood. And then the main or kind of regulating structures. We talked about the difference between tent, a bunch of pallets, a whole shed, kind of spectrum of where you draw the line. I don't want to make sure I'm not forgetting anything else from last time. Yeah, that's right. And we had consensus on the sensitive areas, which I think mostly carried over from Lakewood ordinance, including, including parks. So I might propose to kind of go through those main categories one by one and see where we're at. And that might help direct the conversation, just to focus on one of those at a time.
President Conlon, can you direct me to a page that I can follow?
So in the packet right now, I'm looking at our item A seven. And the sample ordinance, I believe, starts on the next page there.
Okay, so page like ninety eight.
Scroll back up to public comments and go to page ninety eight in the.
One oh one, basically.
Oh, one.
At the end of the whereas is.
Yeah, I'll ignore the whereas for right now. Those are also still Lakewood, so we need to tailor those to Bremerton.
So let's say, let's start on available shelter space.
Thanks, let me do that.
So, yeah, attorney Finnell, I think the only place is defined is that nine dot thirty two dot of twenty. Oh, sorry.
Just like in grade school, I was distracting my classmates.
I'm sorry, so you said.
Yeah.
Available overnight shelter space.
Sorry, I was a comment on the proposed, yeah.
I think we should follow the Port Orchard ordinance, which says within the city of Port Orchard rather than this fifteen mile radius.
So pause a second. I just wanted attorney Finnell to kind of read out that.
Oh, sorry.
Definition and then.
Okay, so available overnight shelter means a private or a public or private facility with an available overnight space open to persons experiencing homelessness at no charge, which must be located within a fifteen mile radius with the starting point of Bremerton City Hall into which the city facilitates transport. And then, as you'll see, that would make sense because we have a second definition right below it. The reason we wrote it this way is because we're letting you know that there's different cities define this different ways. So the highlighted section under there is an alternative, which says available overnight shelter means a public or private shelter with an overnight space available and open to the individual experiencing homelessness at no charge. Overnight shelter is not considered available if the individual experiencing homelessness is required to participate in religious instruction in exchange for the shelter. Those were two examples. And Michael included in your packet a list of from other jurisdictions. It looks like this came out for that. So there are, there's the city of Auburn, which has kind of a long one. Lakewood is where we got the fifteen mile radius. Port Orchard is the one that Councilor just mentioned. It says within the city of Port Orchard. Pauls Bow has the definition, Redmond has, you know, there's, I think, one, two, three, four. Yeah, there's about eight different examples here. And so where this comes from is from, from a legal perspective is that it, it, you know, you can't say, well, there's a shelter in Nevada or something. It obviously needs to be something that the person can actually get to either with transportation that's provided by the city or that's available. You know, on public transit, the case law, there's some language in the past case that made some mention of it needing to be within the jurisdiction, although there are some cities that are interpreting that as what's called dicta, meaning it wasn't like a key holding in the case and that as long as it's reasonably available, then the city can consider it. And so that's why you're getting all these different definitions. I will say, I think the reason for Lakewood is that that fifteen mile is that they do partner with the city of Tacoma. And so when you remember going back to their whereas is they're, they're actually giving money to operate a shelter in Tacoma. And so obviously, they wanted that shelter to count. And so that's my guess, you know, why that's the way it is. But that's all I have to say on this.
Okay, see, I'll just go around on the shelter definition and see if we can get consensus or authority on the definition that looks like, move back to Hanek, if you're first and then Michael.
Thank you. We, we went over this, the last time we discussed this, and I think Councillor Goodnow pointed out that with all of our shoreline, the fifteen mile radius was onerous. And that keeping it within, I think, and this part, I'm not sure if I'm quoting you correctly. Keeping it within city of Bremerton makes sense. It was brought up that to facilitate transport, that also means that you have to have someplace for people to wait for the transport, and it becomes a whole lot of hazarai. Since this whole thing is hypothetical, since we have no such shelter, but planning forward for a date in which our compassion finds expression in the budget. I totally echo your concern that, and therefore I think it should be in the city of Bremerton. That's it.
So I'm not necessarily beholden to the city, but I just thought that the thing was crazy. But first thing is, if it says the city of Bremerton, we could offer them something outside the city of Bremerton if we were able to find space, but they don't have to accept it. Is that how you would?
Well, it wouldn't be considered, what would, that would mean is that if a, if a person was camping in an area that was, camping was prohibited, and there, let's say, if there's a shelter space in Port Orchard and there is a way for the person to, arrangements can be made for the transporter there. If our definition says within the city of Bremerton, then that would not be considered available shelter. So you would, you see what I'm saying?
What I'm saying is, we could offer it to them.
Right, and if they said.
If we have an agreement with, but they could say no and stay put where they're at.
Right.
Okay. I, in this hope we have of working with other county partners, I'd like to see us maybe have some language that says within the city of Bremerton or one of its neighboring partners or some, you know, something like that. We're not speaking to send folks from Nevada, but I want to make sure we're being an advocate for the folks, but I don't want us to create some technicality, like what if the county built a big shelter on, hypothetical, you know, on Riddell, you know, it's literally across the street. And then that's now too far because we've drawn a line. I just want to make sure.
That was.
That we, wherever housing, reasonable housing can be, you know, you know, folks who can afford housing are having to go a distance to find housing they can afford at this point also. So I want to make sure that the first goal is getting somebody in shelter. And, you know, there can be a reasonable amount of distance, but we're not looking to radically change their community. So, but I guess the first thing I was saying is, if it said Bremerton, we could still offer them a bed in the county, but they could maybe opt not take it. But I think we should have some language that's, that's, you know, right, you know, I don't. That goes beyond the physical line, you know, like, you know, if we say, oh, there's a new shelter in Navy Yard City, it'd be like, it's four feet over there, nope.
Yeah, see.
You know, like.
Might take a look at the Auburn definition, because I feel like it sort of addresses your concern. So it says, you know, first, available overnight shelter is a public or private shelter within the city of Auburn that offers overnight shelter to persons experiencing homelessness and confirms to a city employee that it has an available overnight space at no cost for that person. Or if no shelter described in subsection D one A of this section has available space, that's the one above, right? A shelter located within King or Pierce County that offers overnight shelter to persons experiencing homelessness and confirms to a city employee, one, that it has an available overnight space at no cost for that person, and two, that it is accessible to the person by public transportation or vehicle hire at no cost to that person. I mean, I'm not saying it would be King and Pierce, but what I'm saying is like.
No, yes, yeah, I could be, say. Yeah, I wouldn't say Mason, that's a very different community.
Denise, you're next, if you want it.
I appreciate all that discussion. I don't really have a lot of feeling about that. Looking at the city of Auburn, and tell me if this isn't a correct time to bring this up, but it's under shelter space definitions. I'm, I'm interested in whether or not you are including, or we would be including seeing them, which makes it clear that an overnight shelter would be considered available if an individual is prevented from using that space because of their past or present behavior.
Yeah.
I, so.
Yes, attorney Finnell, the.
But maybe we need to wrap up the other before we get into that, I don't know.
That definition is also in. The one for Pauls Bow. Pauls Bow at the last sentence on theirs states, the accommodation is considered available if the individual could not use the accommodation due to voluntary actions such as intoxication, drug use, unruly behavior, or violation of shelter rules. And then Port Orchard has a similar provision. If the person is unable to utilize an available overnight shelter due to voluntary actions such as intoxication, drug use, unruly or assaultive behavior, or violation of shelter rules, overnight shelter space shall still be considered available for the purposes of that section. And so what that means is, let's say, if, let's say, shot, if just Salvation Army has, is open and they're offering a shelter and they have been, they're excluded from using that shelter because assaultive behavior or rule violation or whatever. This definition would say that because if that is a voluntary action that what.
That's the, well, that's, I want to continue with this.
I understand you might not like it, but I mean, that's what that definition means.
Yeah.
The person couldn't.
I've got it.
Then it would say, what that would mean is that that person would be subject to arrest under the code. Because they had, under those cities have that definition, the reading is that it's available, but by through voluntary action, they have made it available.
What I'm most uncomfortable with, and I know council member Chamberlain has her own, what I'm most uncomfortable with is the term voluntary, because you're dealing with addicts. And nobody volunteers to be an addict. And so when you, when you put that level of, I think, inappropriate, when you, when you say that something is completely voluntary, that to me means I'm well aware of all the circumstances and I'm making a rational decision. And I don't think that active addicts have that. So I am a little concerned about that term in there. I understand that this would be used discretionary with discretion. And, but I want to flush that out a little bit more with counsel because I know that in, in some ways, those individuals might be the individuals that we're worried about the most, that will impact our other community members the most. And therefore, shouldn't we, you know, have the appropriate tools to make an arrest or, you know, whatever? I just, the way this appears, it, I, I think we're, by using that term voluntary, and we need to be careful with how we phrase and use this, because we could be blaming them for their own addiction. And I think we all know now, I hope, that addiction is not a choice. Addiction is a condition. And I happen to have it, so I know. And so I just, I'm cautious about that. I want to be really careful. I want to be really careful that this doesn't send out the wrong message, just by the wording that we use. I, I.
What about if it was like the past or present voluntary actions such as criminal acts?
Past or voluntary, past, how about actions?
Actions.
How about actions? And even then, yeah.
Yeah, criminal acts, right. The situation, I can just say from, seeing how cities have developed, the reason that people get to this point is that if you, if you don't have anything on there, right, there's going to be people that burn every opportunity for shelter because of not following shelter rules. And then that person doesn't have anywhere to go locally, and they also. And so, and that's fine, it's just I'm telling you that sometimes that, that will happen. There will be people that are not welcome any longer, whenever, whatever gets set up.
But I do think, and I do think if we took out that corner, what, just, and just put in action, they're still feeling about it. But that's, that's what I'm concerned about the most, is where we're kind of pushing this.
Okay, so what I want to, I know we're talking specifically about this, but I wanted to start us off by saying that an ordinance should also be, let's reframe this to giving rights to folks, to making sure that they have rights, rather than taking away. So if you can reframe, I mean, if you can reframe it to that and have an attitude of we are giving folks rights, then maybe we can see these items in different, in a different way. I just wanted to put that out there. Because we want to, we want to not only protect our property owners, but want to protect our citizens that have no property, right? I see the whole thing is problematic because people get kicked out on the will of whoever's working, sometimes good reasons, sometimes eh, gray areas. And when we have a shelter, it's, there's one. And so if they piss somebody off who's working there, they don't have, they have the overnight people, they just don't have a good relationship, and they constantly are getting kicked out, which does not always happen because of violence. Because, I mean, sometimes, here's, here's some of the situations that I saw when I worked in the overnight shelter work. There was, somebody was upset about a policy, and they argued with the person loudly, and they were booted out. There was another situation where somebody was mentally ill, and he was not on his medication. He had no caseworker, but because he was unsafe to that community, they booted him out. So there's one, one shelter, you know, when they're open. And having any of that language in there is problematic for me, just like having just one tow company. Thank you.
Anyone else in this round?
Okay, so I'm struggling with, I don't like either one of the definitions that are in the code. And then I was like the Pauls Bow one, I'm hearing your comments on. So Pauls Bow one is on page, page one ten of your packet. To me, the Pauls Bow one is more comprehensive, dare I say, more thoughtful than the city of Port Orchard one. Because it takes into account various circumstances, religion and all that stuff. It still has that language that I'm hearing some council managers are opposed to. So in order to reach consensus on that, I understand why they have the language in there. And because it's been, the same, similar language has been passed by various jurisdictions, I assume this is, the attorney, they're saying that's constitutional. You can deny someone their space, or you can say that there is space available, even though technically it's not because this person or persons fall under this category and effectively can't go to the shelter. But they're saying, puff cookies, you meet the term, you got to go somewhere. That's past legal muster and hasn't been challenged.
Hasn't been challenged. I would say, I mean, if, I will say, like, given how the challenges to similar codes have been going, the less risky, I guess, proposition would be to not put it in there.
Right, okay, so.
I mean, it, obviously, the less you legislate people, the less likely. So, but I have not seen a specific challenge. Michael, am I missing, can you?
No, there hasn't been a challenge to that specifically. In fact, Pauls Bow, I, I believe, did not update their ordinance with the, when the recent case law came out, because they believed it to be constitutional anyway. So that's an older definition as well.
So let's, let's give this scenario where we have this ordinance in place. We have a person that has prior interactions with our only shelter, and that person has been effectively trespassed or banned from that shelter. Under, if we enact one of these codes with that clause that we're all talking about, that person can basically say, be told, effectively, get out of town, because you're not allowed to camp, and you're not allowed to be at the shelter. If we don't have that clause in there, that person then can camp in the city of Bremerton. Okay, that's what we're saying. And so you see the problem there? Okay, so we're in a catch twenty-two here. The, the only way, that's a tough one.
It's, it's particularly tough if you have one shelter, right? If there are multiple options for people, then it becomes less of a problem. I think, you say, you know, because if, what council member Chamberlain was talking about, if it was something where a person has a particular problem with some staff person or something like that, you know, presumably, it's what I'm saying, if it's something more arbitrary, it's unlikely to be a problem everywhere. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
If it's a problem everywhere, then it's one of those things where it's like, well, maybe you're the problem, right? So.
But even if they are the problem, they need to have somewhere to sleep. So, 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 right, I mean.
Getting a snap.
So, so, so the only, I'm just talking out loud, this is all about brainstorm. The only effective solution then is you have shelters in your community. And for those people that can't go to those shelters because they've been banned, and if you don't want them camping anywhere within the city, then we need to have a designated camp spot in the city.
Right, but most of those places also have rules, right? So like.
Understood. And so what I'm saying is, they should be allowed to stay there, but we had plenty of testimony, wherever it was, two, three weeks ago or a month ago, that said, we want you to enforce the law. So if they are breaking the law while they're there, then they get prosecuted.
Yeah.
That's what the testimony I've heard from a lot of the houseless advocates. They want to be policed if someone's breaking the law. But the way this is written, if you have a, for lack of a better term, a prior conviction, you're effectively can't go to the shelter. And these people are already downtrodden enough, really? That's pretty insensitive, in my opinion. So in that, if that's the case, then there needs to be a relief valve. And I'm sorry, but the city is going to either accept camping throughout its areas, or we could designate certain parks or whatever, or the alternative is to have a designated camping spot, which I think would, unfortunately, it sounds like we need to have both the shelters and a designated camping spot in order for this to be effective. That's the way I see it. I don't think you're going to get this in an ordinance for next week, I'm sorry. So.
Yeah, I was supposed to take my turn and say, definitely, we're building it piecemeal, but you're right, a lot of you. Am I hearing mostly consensus on the, let's say, the first two of Auburn? It basically says in the city, but then if there is essentially transportation within Kitsap County, we've worded to that acceptable.
You mean A and B?
A and B, yeah, of Auburn. Not to say that, we couldn't add to it, or, but just I want to see if we're mostly good on that.
Has no, no, no cost for that person to get there. I understand that. So the preferences within the city of Bremerton, no shelters allowed then somewhere in.
the preferences within the city of Brampton, no shelters allowed then somewhere in in.
Kitsap. Yeah. Up down in love with it.
On that element.
Just that element, yeah.
Just A and B?
Just A and B. Okay, so some of this sounds like just I think that'll help us going forward. I'm thinking of where shelters would be, what scenarios.
And so we're gonna take out all of like, I need nothing like, nothing like C or.
Well, so let's say it seems like we have, we have majority on A and B, but let's continue that discussion on like the C part of Auburn and the um the Paul's bow wording about um marital status, religious disability, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, Michael, yeah. Okay.
I'm still on the late page. I I I keep getting directed to page one hundred of the packet, but um I don't see.
So I'm staring.
One oh eight C. Okay, I was looking at the wheres. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm now down staring at a shelter space definition from other jurisdictions. Viewing that the.
You on a PDF?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, yeah, I think.
Got it.
Think Councilman Younger summed it quite well on the catch twenty-two. It is really difficult. You want to um so whether sometimes like very good reasons folks aren't in shelter and folks that need shelter, say putting somebody who has a history of, you know, sexual assaults um forced them to be in the same shelter obviously presents issues, just an extreme case.
That's what Salvation Army is, by the way.
Either way, yeah.
They they have this low barrier, they have a separate room for families and people who have, but not people who experienced trauma don't necessarily get to be in that room.
Yeah.
So everybody's mixed in.
Of course, yeah.
Well, I just made that clarifying statement just so y'all know how that works.
Okay, just taking my turn, I'm talking.
Sorry.
Okay, anyway, let's do the, let's do the round on on C or we can set it aside, we can set it aside until we get to the and talk about the designated areas that we talked about last time. Maybe that'll help inform it.
I still think we should simply repeal this ordinance because it's unconstitutional, but I know I do not have, I represent a very small majority, minority. There we go. That's exhausting.
Um, can I go on that? Tangent quote, because I've heard that a few times, that what we're crafting now would replace the current ordinance, correct? I mean, it effectively would appeal at all ordinance and we can replace it with what we're crafting.
We understand that. We didn't, we understand that. We're intelligent in that way. What we also understand is it's unconstitutional in its current form, and I say we repeal it as well.
Back to one at a time.
I was one at a time. I was separate. She finished. You made a statement, then I made a statement that was one at a time. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna sit, let's move on to the the separate areas discussion um from last time. So so Attorney Fennell, can you walk us through on the proposed resolution of where the separate areas were kind of defined and called out?
The, when you say separate areas, you mean areas where camping would be prohibited all the time or are you?
Uh, the other one where when there is no shelter space, that there will be designated areas.
Oh, um. Okay, wait, can I just ask a question? Are we, are we just not gonna, we're just leaving that question about the actions and all that?
Yes, leave it on the board. Let's see that kind of section C from Auburn on the board for now. It sounds like we might need to discuss um the designated sites before.
Okay, okay, okay. Sorry, I missed that. Um, all right.
I I disagree. I think it's a separate issue. I think that this, it's a basic eligibility. And uh I I I really feel strongly that this aspect of it, if they can't get into a uh shelter because of their their behavior, I'd like to see that that removed until we have.
Yeah, I think that's what we were.
Full services, yeah, but I don't wanna just leave, I I think. I mean, we can go around, let's see if we can come to some consensus about it, but leaving it in, the other thing I wanna say, since we're, this is around um is that I think that completely um uh obliterating this, repealing this, um I understand why you want it. It's a message. And I don't think it's the message we wanna send. So I'm I'm all for trying to make an ordinance work for us.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in and rule. We we already as a council made a decision to go forward with this process, so I don't wanna be evaluating past decisions, so let's keep moving forward.
Real quick.
But um is it on?
Auburn A and B.
Sure.
So we're we're all okay with Auburn A and B?
Yes, so that was the.
Which page?
Just just for now, this is an incon.
Page one oh eight.
Trying to see general consensus and and majority. Okay, so then, all right, given these two statements, let's do, let's do a round on C on imposing that, sorry, the round on imposing restrictions due to criminal activity and related and see if we have, see if we have a consensus and majority there.
Good. Page one oh eight.
So what? Yeah, so one, one example is city of Auburn subsection C. The other one is the last part of Paul's bow's ordinance, the last sentence. I believe one other city had one.
I can I just?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I'm coming from education, okay? I'm coming from an education background and when we make rules, like I guess that this is city and it's different, but we just put them in a different language, like to me, this is exclusionary. Can, I mean, I don't wanna beleaguer us. I know this, I know, but I just want us to reframe it. Is there any way that we can put, make it in a positive light, meaning um here are your rights? Like you will not be subject to fining under these conditions. I I know I missed the last study session. I'm sorry about that, but I'm here today, y'all. Um person's facing or however, can we just say you will not be subject to a fine when there is no public shelter available?
Question for you.
I just flipped the script, I'm sorry.
No, it's just, I mean, I guess I could try to rewrite an ordinance in like a different just tell a person what they to say this is all the stuff that you can do and they won't get fined.
I mean, I guess it is, maybe that's a little radical, isn't it?
Well, I'm just saying that so when our codes, it tells people what they can't do. It just, that's just how they are.
That's, I I get that.
Um, so this is like a list, you know, you think of like, I mean, this is our criminal code and our it generally tells people, it doesn't say like all the things that you can do and then you won't get fined, because there's a lot of things that you can do and you won't get fined. It usually tells you what you can do what would what what you can't do, and if you do, then there's a violation section.
So I vote for no C.
Correct.
Well, I vote for no C.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm done.
So.
I could go either dumb guilt.
All right. And so also Eric brought up some of the language in Paul's bows about um if an individual or family unit cannot use available accommodation because of the individual, family or sex, familial or marital status, religious beliefs, disability or length of stay restrictions, accommodation is not considered available. Is that something that you guys like?
I'm gonna give thumbs up.
Which page?
Next page.
Okay, thank you. Got it. Like.
Okay, seems already there. So I think we're out for the definition is to take state this year, take A and B of Auburn, updated to say Bremerton and Kitsap, that of Auburn and King of Pierce County and um add in the language from Paul's bow regarding those protections. Yes, okay. So I think we got that hammered out. The portions.
It just, I'm I'm wondering um what I keep thinking, I know that there's a percentage of individuals who have been barred from shelters who shouldn't have been barred. I'm, that's a gift, that happens all the time. Um having said that, there's also a percentage of them that should be barred, right? Probably, I would just chance. Um I'm, I guess I'm a little concerned about uh uh law enforcement's uh response to that. Uh, I would worry about them feeling like we're not giving them the tools they need to take care of a situation, but um I probably should have brought that up a long time ago.
Well, I, I, it's also one of those things um that if it doesn't work, we can always come back.
Yeah.
And just to address your concerns that they're breaking a law.
Right, it's not like.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be if um right.
It's not like it's an additional rule that they're breaking that we're enforcing on them. If they're trespassing, if they're breaking windows all over the city.
There.
Okay, so let's move on to the designated areas. And Attorney Fennell, I believe that is in the sample ordinance. Page one oh four of our packets under nine thirty-two thirty, good God. Top of page, top of page one oh four, where it's highlighted additional locations could be added as council sees fit. Is that the section that contains all?
Yeah, well, and it kind of starts um actually the page up because we do, we do have the critical areas and wetland thing, which for us, that all kind of falls under the same topic, which is areas that are off limits, like so one of them is environmentally sensitive things, like critical areas, wetlands, like wouldn't use the term protected waters, and then um other cities have other places. Um, and so we went through that. There was a big list last week or two weeks ago um on who all was doing what, red, if you recall. And I would say like, once we get I some guidance, then I think it would probably be smart. You've noticed a lot of the ordinances have a map. Um, but it's you know, I kind of need some direction before I get to that point, I think, a little bit, so. Because I know Mr. Uh, or Councilor Younger made the point that sometimes it would be that start adding locations and you get those bubbles on the map where you realize the whole city's a problem.
We'll get there. Okay, so I, let's say, let me take one step back. I think we had um overall the consensus on this last time, but is there any issue with the critical area definition right there in the middle of page one oh three?
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I, no objection to it whatsoever, except nobody would know what they are. They're not signed, they're not fenced, they're not posted for the most part.
Mm-hmm.
I think.
Do we have no, can I?
Yeah.
Uh, Director Lovato. Do we ever have signage up at our, these are critical areas are, I mean, part of, part of them are parks, right? We also have other critical areas that are governed by public works. Is signage available for those locations to say no camping? Do you have that going on right now?
There are general park signs that are uh located at park entrance that include camping restrictions. Preparations don't sign. Preparies are in with parks or covered by the general park sign.
Yeah.
Really, our our enforcement is more inches out of park closure at dusk.
Right. Park closure at dusk, but also, I mean, and here's the deal, what I'm getting to is that if we were to have a whereas in our ordinance, we would already have protections, park protections act, whereas, what is it called, park protection, whereas park protections act is in effect, something along those lines, that would be covered. I um are all critical, what about all the rest of the? When I am asking about critical areas, I just wanna make sure, as Counselor Mocker stated, that they have signs.
None of them.
None of them. And.
Sorry, uh yep, none of them.
So would signage be available, be placed in critical areas?
Okay.
Sorry, briefly, wetlands would be the uh only critical area that has condition of development required.
Requirement is different than electing two post.
And it's only as a condition of development, they're not, wherever there's wetland, there's not a sign, which is a condition of development. That's what.
What are some other examples of critical areas, so I understand?
Steep slopes. Nah, watershed lands.
Okay, yeah.
Streams.
Exact language, just such areas include wetland streams, fishing, wildlife habitat, steep slopes, geologic hazard areas, recharge areas, flood hazard areas, as well as the buffers, which are to protect the information areas, watershed areas.
You just named a ton of locations that people safely camp at. So when I went on my trip to Brownsville by kayak, I noticed a lot of people waking up along the shoreline. I don't that's a safe place for people who wanna be away from larger groups who might have predators within them. But uh, I'm just gonna be quiet.
Any other round of comments on?
Can I do a real quick follow up on critical areas?
Yeah.
So it's my understanding that it would just be like, hey, this is a wetland, you can't camp here. If somebody were to come along, you know, like a law enforcement person or a brave neighbor and just go, hey, this is a wetland, do you ever mess up the wetland? This is a stream. So it's my understanding that that's the only way this is used. Or this is a steep slope, it's gonna rain, you're gonna find yourself down at the valley in the morning.
I think that is um optimistic viewpoint, that that is the only way that it would be used.
Oh, I did not say that. I said, that's the way. That's the intent. Sorry.
And anyone else wanna comment on critical wetland? All right, I'm gonna look for thumbs if the existing languages and sample ordinances acceptable. All right, we'll keep that there in critical areas. Let's go down to um Attorney Fennell, what do you think that makes sense to tackle first, either the exorcist or the designated areas?
I would say, well.
We could just go down the.
Sub four.
Yeah.
Has a bunch of areas, like, you know, it has the within XXX feet from preschool daycare center, early learning facility, elementary school, junior highs, high school, community facility or playground. Um, so like I don't, I mean, if you're doing those, I think I guess.
Yeah, so let's, okay, so let's talk on that topic. So this was um yeah, put out there to counsel with the X X feet from these types of places at all times at the off limits. So does everybody, before we do a round on comments on that, see the sample language that's in there? That's the bottom of page one oh three.
So I'm okay with the language, but give me examples of where they can camp.
So.
Yeah.
You know, you're telling us where they can't camp.
All these.
Right, okay, let's do, let's do around Eric.
No, well, so that's a question. If it's with, I I understand your criteria and you gotta work on how many people are preschool. So the way I'm reading this, they can still then camp in the public right of way. Which is where we are getting the majority of our complaints from our citizens. So you understand what you're doing.
Wouldn't be right away within so many feet of these places, though.
No, no, I understand. And I'm not saying that's not the appropriate, you know, place, but I'm just letting you know that by excluding, putting these all as exclusions, you're basically saying then camping, if they don't have a shelter available, will be in the right of way across from or on the sidewalk or whatever in front of someone's house. You understand that by doing all these restrictions, they have to go somewhere, they're be allowed. Is that the intent? Or as much as I don't like it being a park, at least a park is, uh, you know, overnight or whatever, it's no one's residence is right there inside the park, understand? Started the rationale and Jeff, as I know, is like, he's gonna, he's saying some swear words and following with Eric and then all this other stuff. I get that. But um that's what I'm I'm wrapping around, I believe me. I'm just, I'm struggling with that.
Certainly, if you start making that list really long.
Yeah.
Just like what you talked about, it means that um where camping is allowed is gets necessarily smaller, right? And so, like I said, when we looked at these originally, right? I think Eric, uh, Councilor, you know, you like Lakewood, Lakewood's only did the environmental stuff. Um. Um but we've also looked at other cities that have done, you know, more than that. So your points, I mean, I said, these really aren't my ordinance. I'm just throwing these out there as what other cities have been doing, but um where that would lead then would be so that the right of way would around those locations would be off limits. It wouldn't be off limits where, you know, and so you, but then there's a separate ordinance that makes us keep right of way clear, right? So you can't put tents in the roads, you can't put tents um in our sidewalks, or we're gonna be at risk for ADA violation. And so um it would really end up being planting strips, um areas, uh those like wedges that sometimes are, you know, at corners and things, city property that is not developed. Um.
Yeah. And, and I think that's the key. I, I think you could have all those restrictions, including right of way. Think we talked about, there's how many city-owned properties that are vacant?
Thirty-one.
Okay.
Some of them are out by Lake Tujia.
Oh, okay, but um, I mean, this is tough. I, I know I'm throwing this out again, it's just brainstorming, but if you're gonna exclude parks, then it has to be any city-owned property, uh other than buildings, parking lots, whatever, conduct business. You can't just say within X feet on a right of way because you're gonna have people suing under the ADA and all that, the sidewalks, people want to be able to work on that, so. So that's not ideal either, but at the same point, you need to have a place. They're citizens too, and they have the right to public property in my, so here's where I'm going with this. I know we're under old three oh, and, and on the following page, under an enforcement suspended, this is my solution. Is where it says, the authority to issue a citation or arrest, file charges for violation in this section shall be suspended anytime there is no available overnight shelter space or a, for the individual camping or a designated camping location. Right? So that puts the onus on the city to come up with one or two designated camping locations. If they don't, then the individual or individuals can camp anywhere in public property, and that's where we tweak, if you want, to have these exclusions for unauthorized camping regardless, but don't make it so restrictive that they have nowhere to go. That's where I am going with this. Okay? And I can't tell you tonight, and I think the mayor needs to be involved along with his department heads in figuring this out because I don't work forty-plus hours a week examining all the properties, and we have this section here that says where the designated site locations are. That's the administration to come up to the council and say, these are the ones we recommend. And by the way, we recommend, you know, making these off limits because my department, our department heads are subject matter experts, they know the city, we know the city too, I get that. We do know the city, but as far as all the mechanics of all this, and that's where I am at. Um and it balances the testimony from we, from the people we heard at MLK, the homeowners that say, please, I need quiet enjoyment of my property, I, I perceive safety, et cetera. And it balances the needs of the people that are unhoused in that it's not enforced, if there's no shelter space and/or there's no camping space. Okay, so that should cover everyone. Again, if you're violent, you know, you're so extreme that you're a danger, you're gonna be breaking some law and you're gonna get arrested, okay? That's the provision here. I'm sorry, there has to be that relief, you know? And then um, so to me, what I just said, it kind of balances it all out. But um it's really on the city to have a designated camping area. It, it really is.
So coming full circle, I think one of the first things I talked about was that the, there would be just to amend the code to add C and D.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So there is, so when we originally talked about this, it was, the big decision tree was repeal or omit, right? And then it went down to, okay, we're going down the amend road. And I said, the um, the most um, I guess simplest amendment would just simply be to keep our current code, everything the same, except say that it is suspended when shelter space isn't available. And then I said, and then we kind of had the discussion about that, but that would mean that if shelter space isn't available, there's no restriction like for critical areas or no restrictions for um, you know, schools or whatever, and we kind of started going down that road. So what I'm saying is, um, yes, because that's very similar to what Paulsville has. So if you look at what Paulsville and Port Orchard have, their code is not nearly as complex as some of the other I five corridor cities. They uh simply say, you know, that it's, you can't um, well, we don't have the whole code for here for you, but they essentially just say that, you know, you can't camp in the city. It's very similar to our code, instead that they've added sections that just say it's not enforceable if there's no shelter space available.
Let's keep going around, focus on this X distance question, Jennifer, then Denise.
Get rid of it. Um also, the language is problematic. We're making assumptions about people, that they're gonna hurt children. And we don't, we don't, I mean, statistically, where's the data? Get rid of it.
I don't, did I say that people are hurting children? Is this the allegation?
I didn't make that allegation about you. I just said the language is problematic to me, not you.
Okay, that's fine, just, I'll see where it sits.
It, it does seem like we're, the timing of this, you know, we're trying to craft an ordinance at the same time that the mayor and the administration are trying to fill the gap in a lot of services. Um, again, I keep going back to what I was saying last week, and let's, let's write what we aspire to. You know, this is what we want it to be. And so I like the inclusion that Councilman Younger uh suggested with the inclusion of camping spaces along with shelter, if there is no uh overnight shelter or uh camping accommodation.
Designated.
Yeah, designated camping space, because I do think this council is leaning very heavily towards a designated camping space. Um, maybe that's the question we should be really grappling with, is that are we all for that? And if we generally are for that, um, we need to write this with that, with that in mind.
I need to butt in real quick and apologize, because I misunderstood D as opposed to number four within XXX feet. I think I'm, I was confused about where we were at with the process. Apologies for that.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'll take on really, yeah, being specific. So yeah, nine dot thirty-two dot thirty second piece of section four.
Apologies, and now I am back on track.
Very.
You can tell I'm getting confused. Um, if we had a map.
Okay, so comments on that, X feet from any preschool, childcare center, yada, yada.
Cut that.
I like Occam's razor. The simplest solution is the best. The simplest explanation is the best. Um, uh, there's no camping um except when there's no shelter or no designated camping space. It's simple, it's clear, pointing people to a designated camping space or preferably designated pallet city, but that's a discussion for another day. Um, that's clear, because it's, i- if, even if you are not confused in your mind, it's difficult to figure out, like, what is the school, what is a preschool, what is a community center, what is, you know, church? It's, it's an endless list. A designated camping split. Well done, Eric.
I.
Well, take it my turn, I've seen Michael's hand up. My, my, so I concern here with the um, why, I personally, I think along with some others wanted to consider this, is that my understanding is right now we have um, if there is shelter space, there's still designated areas. I'm worried in the situation of what if there's never enough shelter space? I would love to see us get there, but you know, what if, what if Bremerton built five, ten shelters tomorrow, and by definition, whatever in the county, and it all still is full? And if that continues for a long, long time, I think it's worth considering this section as I understand it, which is that at no time, within a certain number of feet um, from, we, it's basically a school, a community center, you know, playground, um, so we consider that as no matter what, those are off limits within a certain amount of feet. I understand the concern about if you make that distance too large and you've covered the whole city. Um but that's, that's where that's coming from.
Can I?
You do have to second round on it.
My comment before, when I erroneously commented to regarding Eric's D as opposed to four, was that you're making assumptions about people, plus these schools are open during the daytime, people are camping at night, it's almost like, I mean, if they're on different schedules. But I, I wouldn't make any assumption about people who are camping, that they would cause harm to children. And that's where I think the language is applied. That's all.
Seeing any other hands, I'd say a lot of the community input was concerned about some of the impacts that come along with encampment, like an MLK. Um, and hearing from the Marvin Williams Center about needles nearby and kids traveling to and from school and daycare, so responding to, but Michael.
So I brought this up originally, partly because we heard that the Marvin Williams Center's summer programs are being restricted to be conducted indoors. We can't sell pot within X amount of feet, we can't sell liquor with X amount of feet, and we know that there's a spectrum of folks that are living on the street, and there are some that would be happy to be in housing in a new home tonight. There's some that are there with heavy substance abuse or mental health issues that are gonna need a different solution. Because nothing we're talking about, it's gonna help the folks who need, who need recovery, right? That's, that's another solution. That's not just, that's not a, turning a gravel lot into parking. That's a different, it's a different solution. So I, I, some, this is why this is so hard. It's because we have to come up with something reasonable, and that's something that's maybe designed for the median of who our unhoused population is.
Can, I wanna go, can I quickly ask, I don't, did we ever talk about the time? Remember, we talked about time at some point in time?
Decision last uh week was to not discuss the time.
Not to discuss the time.
We discussed it not to enact the time.
If I could kind of say one more thing on that.
Yeah.
Is that, one of the issues is that we make an argument that people shouldn't have to move their stuff, but yet you're saying, but they're only camping there at night. No, they, they need to have a place to keep their stuff and be there and not be shoot away.
Thank you for that reminder.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more comments?
Yeah, Eric. Yeah, so Jeff, uh what I would advocate is for unauthorized camping in public places, period, regardless of the conditions, it would be number two, three, and four, critical areas, city-owned buildings, parking lots, within XX feet from any preschool. Instead of the council coming up with, I would use, hopefully, what the liquor control board is using for marijuana and alcohol and all that stuff. So we're not reinventing the wheel, we're just adopting our current standard that's kind of a state law. And I would be okay with that.
It's a thousand feet.
Whoa.
You're not, that's gonna be everywhere. Y'all, we got so many schools.
Um, our, uh, our cannabis retailers will tell you that it's pretty much everywhere.
Then why do we got so many pop stores in this town?
Liquor sale? Trying to diminish the number of schools.
But I'm just saying, like, where, um, yeah. It's, it's a very.
Okay.
I haven't, I just know that I've heard complaints about it.
So perhaps five hundred feet would be appropriate. I don't know.
Yeah, I think some places went two fifty, some, you know.
We'd have to see a map.
Well, then you go like safer routes to schools, you know, or like, where do you, like, you know, should we think about like where kids are walking to and from school?
Yeah, the routes to school.
Right.
All right, come here, yeah.
Man.
Anna, you wanna come on?
But that's why I'm saying a designated camping area. It's like, point people to something instead of forbidding them from all the things they can't do.
Sorry, Mayor.
What was that?
Did I miss you with hand up? Sorry.
Oh, I, you know, I don't know if it's helpful, but I'm researching, um, you know, and we're gonna have to agree on terms, but they're outdoor shelters. And um there's legal terms. So there's jurisdictions, we've already done it. I'm gonna get the model, and I'll get the legal language. Um, I'll get all of the equipment, we'll need all the materials, what it takes, just have it. Now, I'll stage it, I have to, you know, and I'll purchase it if I have the budget, get your approval to purchase, stage it at Public Works, and then I'll stand by for you to tell me where you won't allow an outdoor shelter. In the places you can go camping, I'll stay away, I'll start looking at areas that you allow.
So I wanna make sure we're all in the same facts on the table. I got it straight in my head, it's keep going around, around. Um, X feet from Y places and the designated spots.
Right.
The X feet from Y places would apply at all times, regardless of shelter space ability. The Y, the designated places, um, that would, that would be in effect when there is not shelter space.
No, that is your shelter space. The designated, like a camping area is just, it's just part of your available shelter space. It just may, it's a way to expand it, right, so that you have more available shelter space.
So you have to read the language, when there is no available overnight shelter space, then the designated sites are allowed?
No.
No.
There's rules allowed.
Yeah, they're both allowed, so there's gonna be, ideally, like, so you think of, like, Tacoma has multiple things going on, they've got um brick and mortar type shelters, they have safe parking spots, they have um the, what's the word, for the outdoor.
Open air shelter?
Open air shelters. And so that's all, those are all in the definition for available shelter space, so the idea is that it's, it's not a separate.
Again, I'm just, I'm not trying to give an opinion, so I'm not using my time to give opinions, but make sure we're all on the same page. Nine dot thirty-two dot thirty, the very last highlighted section of that, the designated camp and locations. At times when there is no available overnight shelter space available for the individual camping, occupation of public property, camping and sport of personal property shall be allowed at the following designated sites.
And so if, I mean, like, I guess what I would say is, like, on those, um, well, okay, I, I, I was, I would not, um, you could write it that way, but that would not be, what I'm, I guess I'm what I'm hearing the mayor talk about is um a designated site that is um conforms with the city's code on these types of sites. Well, you know what I'm saying? Not like where we say you can go camp in the Pendergrass parking lot or something like that, and it's not like a um fenced, um, you know, a place that has wash facilities, trash, a, a meeting area for service providers, like those are the kind of things that are like an open air shelter. Um.
Okay, and the, much of the proposal is, all right, putting blinders on what's written in front of us, the proposal is that those places would be allowed all the time?
All the time, they would be a part of your available shelter space.
Okay, so we would have location, specific locations that are okay to camp regardless of whether there's shelter space.
Yeah, and may, Michael, can, Michael, can you explain that sub D? Because I, I, that was new as of last week.
Yeah, I think that, excuse me, I think it could be written either way. Um, it could, it could be a permanent designated camping location, so you could tweak that language slightly. Um, or, and, and then it would be kind of an add-on, like you said, Kylie, to shelter space. Uh, so they would both be potentially available at all times. Um, but how it, how it is written, you're Um, but how it, how it is written, it, you're correct, council president, in that, that it would. It would only apply if there's no. Indoor shelter space available. So that would need to be modified if, if the council's going a different direction.
All right. Thanks for that clarity.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay. That's the option. That's confusion. Okay. So if I missed it, proposal on the table is specific locations. That are designated with the help of mayor administration. Regardless of shelter space availability.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's going to be included in. The definition of. The place you can be, I mean, whether it's a shelter.
I love it.
Yeah. I think the thing that, I think what the mayor was talking about is like, if you guys, if the council, sorry, um, is going to say. We don't want, um. This type of. Um, activity, this many feet from this location or that many feet from that location. Then. You know, it, it, does that apply to just? A, a, um, unsanctioned camp? Or is that applied to something that the administration create, you know, put somewhere? Cause I think what the mayor is talking about was that waiting for the council to say, where do you want? Where are you going to allow this type of? Thing and then, and then give me those parameters and then I can. We did. Administration can go and try to get.
My interpretation, if you don't mind. Is, um, if you outright prohibit. Then that's the area you won't want. Either this regulated. Outdoor shelter or, um. Or the typical public right of way spot that we're seeing people in now, that's outright prohibited. Everywhere else. Is going to be a place I'm going to start looking. So it'll be, you will allow everywhere else. We don't have a shelter space. You're going to allow camping on right of way. Or you're going to allow, um, these, those eight areas where we can do this stuff. This open air shelter.
To round out them, Eric.
Do we believe we're going to have an ordinance for next week?
No.
This, this point unlikely.
I would move that we limit debate on this matter. As it is eight twenty.
Let's see if we can get a, um. At least a draft.
I've got a motion before the council. Anybody want a second?
Is there a second to, uh?
Nope. Okay. Just to limit debate on this matter.
Second.
I want to throw something out. I think it might.
We have a motion and a second.
Can you clarify? To fifteen more minutes?
I take a limited second.
Are, are we worried about our car turning into a pumpkin or, you know, it's only eight twenty, so.
Well.
We got paid for this. Let's continue on.
I made a motion. I have a second.
You don't have a second.
Okay. Okay. Clear emotion. Yeah. Okay. So. All right. We'll keep going.
And I apologize if I sound like I'm going back and forth. You, Jeff, you had some good ideas about X amount of feet, all that stuff. And Anna reminded me, let's go back to the basics. And I think what I'm about to say, I think will somewhat satisfy the people that say. Throw the whole thing out. And the, and the people that say, oh no, we need to have something in place. And it's really simple. And so when you're looking at. Page. One oh three, where it says unauthorized camping. Basically, we, it keeps our current ordinance, but puts the exception. And so hopefully it basically makes it unenforceable if we don't have the two conditions met. So it would read as follows. You would keep A, do not do anything with B, any of these other exemptions. You're clouding this and I'm sorry. Uh, people are on their down and outs. They're not going to be thinking, am I X amount of feet from any of this? Uh, can I do this? Is this a critical area? We're making it too complicated. Keep it simple, stupid. So here's how we say it. Unauthorized camping in public places. Except as permitted, which is A, by permit pursuant to BMC nine thirty-two point oh six four O. Or as otherwise provided by city code or ordinance, it shall be unlawful for any person to camp in or on, otherwise occupy. Any public place or public property. And then that's the one main section. Okay? The next section is on the next page. The enforcement is suspended. The second part. The authority to issue a citation. Or arrest and file charges for violation of the section shall be suspended. Anytime there is no available overnight shelter space for the individual camping or a. Or, or overnight shelter space or a designated camping location for the individual camping. And that's simple. And that's all you need. That's all you need. The rest of this, we're going to have all these nuances that come in. And by the way, this is not even enforceable if the city doesn't get on the ball and come up with some designated camping locations. So it effectively satisfies those people that says, throw this thing out. Well, we have thrown it out unless the city picked up the baton and comes up with a designated camping location. This takes care of all those people that may. For whatever reason, we don't have a suitable, uh. Uh, overnight stay place, a shelter, or if for whatever reason they're prohibited, they're not, they're not bonded there. Or if we have overflow. We have overflow. The answer is we need to have designated camping locations. If that fills up. We don't have designated camping locations and the ordinance is out and this whole country is in a, uh, day of reckoning. Whatever. So I like it simple like this.
Can I rephrase to make sure I got the, all of all that? So it would, everything, everything you said, but to rephrase it. Camping is not allowed in the city at any time when there's either shelter space overnight. Or we have our designated area set up with open space in that. If the shelters are all full and the designated areas are all full, then the ordinance is unenforceable.
So going back to the original decision tree where we did repeal and amend, this was the one where we said amend the easy of it. Right?
Hmm.
Yep.
I don't want to say, but you know, easy in that if for us, it essentially it comes down to adding like a few sentences. Um, so the COGLO.
Oh, good luck with that.
I do have a personal opinion on it. I like it. It does require us though. The city, yeah, to have enough designated space. And then. The question becomes about the resources for that space. However, something that's allowed in conjunction with the definition of Bremerton and Kidstaff. That the mayor is able to work on spaces in Bremerton or within greater Kidstaff area. That, yeah, no, easy task, um. And if I talk this aloud. Again, I want to. Prepare for the situation that everything is, everything is full. And the contingency where Bremerton has gone above and beyond to do everything it can to provide shelter space and camping. And it's full because we're the only one providing that space and everyone else is coming here to use it. Um, and in that case, if we hit that, we still have protections for, um, you know, things like Martin Williams. Um, so that's all I'm thinking. I don't. Yeah. Otherwise, I think, I think it's quite reasonable proposal.
Quick comment about, I used to be able to say. I'm tired of Bremerton being the place where everybody goes. I'm tired of Bremerton being. All the only place that cares about the homeless or, you know, the only shelter, the only, uh, all the services are in Bremerton. That's not true anymore. You know, we've lost our shelter space. And so, um, I, I have confidence in the mayor. That, that we're gonna, you know, solve this. I'm all for this. I feel guilty. Because it's late in the evening. Really late for me. Um, and you all have been working on this. For weeks, months, probably. And I want to make sure we're not missing anything, you know, we've gone here, there and everywhere. We've done deep dives. I don't mind at all that we're taking a long time to do this. This is really important work. Um, however, if we can push the easy button and have the same impact. Uh, and flexibility for everybody involved, then I say, okay. Um, this is. Okay.
I was just gonna ask, when does inclement? Season officially start? Isn't it October first?
Right now, I think it's going to be November.
November first. So it goes November first essentially, and sometimes it can be early or extended depending on weather. And it really depends, it's very dependent, I mean, on temperature.
Yeah.
Um, and so. I mean, I almost. I really like just short and easy. But we, we don't necessarily. I mean. I am kind of hoping slash assuming. That you're going to cover the solution, Mayor, before inclement weather season, because that's what it becomes.
We will have, these folks will have a place to go. Okay. Salvation Army will be available. They'll have capacity.
Or what was our point in time when was it happening?
Well, right now, um. Hundred and, well. Bremerton, I don't. I don't remember three hundred. I think it was a hundred and something.
And that might have been people who were like couch surfing or something.
Right. So, um, you know, we've been up to a hundred in shelter.
Okay.
So, um, we at least will have that. There's, I think. Those who called, call from brought it up. I mean, you know, I don't, the thing I keep saying over and over and it's. It's toward a life here a minute. I don't know when this is going to stop and when people are going to. How many more are coming? So we're just trying to. Yep. So we're just gonna, gonna stand up that shelter. We're gonna contribute. I will keep looking for a spot. It won't happen overnight. I mean, we can't do it all on our own. And, um.
I did hear that, uh, with the next legislative session, there wasn't a pilot program, the state legislature, just a little bird in my ear, but, um.
What kind of pilot program?
Uh, there's just extra money. Uh, uh, we, we probably know the same connection.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, I just, I'm hoping that we have more than one. Uh, shelter option was just kind of the hope. So. I can't make any.
Yeah.
Grand hopes about an open air shelter spot. And I think that that's, so we're not getting assurances on an alternative designated location. Is what I'm hearing.
Oh. Well, I've got a meeting next week with strong. The strong manufacturers. And it's a, they, they, um. We've used, we've, um, researched them before for the. The large, um, when we're talking about field hospitals during COVID.
Right.
So these are very, very safe, uh, clean, um, structure.
Okay.
That could house up to a hundred people, but we're going to have to work on location and how do you actually permit to get this into the city? We have some work.
So I guess what it really comes down to is I'm concerned about passing an ordinance that has designated location prematurely. Without, um, assurance that there is a designated location.
Right.
Especially by inclement weather season. So just getting a feeling.
Yeah, that's good. Counselor President, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
It does come to a chicken and egg because I'm, I don't want to cite.
Right before we have.
Place. And then you build your ordinance around what. You know, and is that the right way to do business? I'm, you know, I don't know. Um, so. Um. You know, I. And I would even defer to. You know, Kylie and. Other conversation. He was, I am looking around. I've found a spot where I think it could work. I think. I think would be acceptable in your new ordinance, even if you were to outright permit some areas. Um, or outright prohibit some of the areas.
Would your officers assist people in finding alternative locations?
Well, we have to.
To camp.
Yeah, we would absolutely have to. We would.
That's not designated by, it's not one of the open air, you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely. That's what they do right now. I mean.
So the proposal on the table is, um, it's what Eric kind of called there, Eric's proposal there. Don't see any more thoughts on that. Even the thumbs up comes, I mean.
Seems too good to be true.
It's really basically what we're doing right now.
I mean, it, it offers no relief to the people who are feeling. Impactive. And some of them are families and children who are also vulnerable. Let's not get in a vulnerability contest, but there's all kinds of vulnerable populations. We need to. Yeah, I'll take my turn to say I, I. I'm actually. I would do a, a yes and of what Eric proposed. But yeah, still have the critical areas in, in. Find with a small radius around some of those facilities, but, um. I think it still needs to be there as an extra protection. But that's where I'm at.
Building on that, i- if you put it as all right of ways with that, that covers all the schools and then would that cover all the homeowners? And still give people a place to go if we don't have. An alternative campsite. It would give them parks. So it would address your concern about schools. And it would address other people's concerns about having tents in front of someone's house. But it would also still allow. These other areas, and we're not designated parks for this, but. De facto, if we don't have. The alternative site, the parks are available. It's a good question.
Yeah. This might be, uh, for Kylie or Tom. Like. Who, okay, who owns the sidewalk? Like, there, there's the. Because my understanding is like, sometimes it's the property owners, but then we get an easement. Like, so there's like an interesting.
Legal. I can.
Boundary there.
Right. So, um.
I asked you how big the right of way is the dedicated street.
Right. And, um, it's usually. What's typical like, is it? I mean, like for neighborhood streets, what thirty feet?
Um, for the right of way?
No, the, the whole.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so, um. Just, okay. It's a long. Yes. It's an easement basically, usually. Um, there are some situations in which it's be simple, but usually an easement. Where the property owner actually owns it through, to, to the center of the street. Um, this actually came up, um, and that. Looking at, you know, what's going on on some of the, the, the streets, um. And about citing bathrooms. Um, the city of Tacoma, almost a hundred years ago, actually tried to put a bathroom in the right of way. And a, a joining property owner said that they didn't want that and they sued the city. And they won because the court said that people basically consent to having. A. Road in front of their house and the maintenance and stuff that goes along with that. Um, but that they didn't consent to having a facility constructed and that to do something like that, the city would need to. Um, acquire additional property rights, um, because. It was not for maintenance or it was basically transportation or utilities. Well, it's, it's their, it's their prob, you know, it's their property and the, the courts had actually struck down boating boats, food carts. Um, any manner of things that aren't transportation or utility related. Um, placements in the right of way as being, um, something the city could do just as an extension of their right of way. Property rights. And so, um. So long story short, or. But. It's not ours to do whatever we want with. And some of the, um, uh. Lawsuits that have been filed against cities related to, to nuisances being allowed to be maintained in that. Face involved as owners asserting that they have been de facto, um. Designated as now hosting a, a campsite. In that right of way and it's, uh, exceeds what they originally, I guess, like we've already signed up for.
So, yeah. So, so building on that because. If you want relief, as you mentioned, this doesn't take care of relief for. In, in, in the testimony, MLK, Marvin Williams, the residents on there. But if we did the right of way saying regardless. There is no camping in the right of way. This would take care of the immediate concerns of people parking. Or setting camps up right outside of homes because they would be in the right of way and in front of Marvin Williams. Again, they'd be in the right of way. But it would still give them plenty of options. Uh, of other public spaces. And, um, that would then afford immediate relief for the people that came down and testified and said, this is an issue. And it still puts the onus on us to come up with a designated camping space. Where else all of the public spaces are still open.
So. The, the concern I have about that is that we have a referendum that was passed in nineteen eighty-nine protecting our parks. And if the city takes action. Um, I'll read it. You, you know, the Park Protection Act. In our code. Um. That. It, it lists pretty much every park we have. The list is twelve, three. Park properties long. Park properties long, um, that. There's a whole procedure for the sale, possible sale, lease or significant change in use of any part. Of any of the above-mentioned parklands, a significant change in use, showing any activity which does not complement or support a recreational activity.
Okay. Okay, and, yeah, so we're, we're not in violation of Parks Act under current ordinance, because we prohibit it. And if we pass this, we are, we're, uh, prohibited only if two conditions are met. A shelter or a, so, so we're actually violating the, uh, we're putting a condition that's violation of Parks.
Right.
It isn't, an option is no right-of-way, no. I don't know what that.
Well, and I will say, like, so this is another part of the suggestion, and so there are other parks in code that are still applicable, so like, for example. Um, our watershed, no, it is in an area that's open to the public. And so if someone is there, whether they're camping or walking, they're subject to, um. Right, and so there are other things that are already on the books with regard to right-of-way specifically, but that's where we, that's unfortunately. The, the fact that it is, for, um, disorderly conduct, obstructing the sidewalk or obstructing the road. Is, um, prohibited. However, just, that means if you're in the planting strip, you're not doing one of those things. And so that is a safe zone, right? Um, and so what our officers have kind of encountered is, they, you know, people are generally will move out of the way if there's someone that needs to pass. And so they're not really obstructing it, and so, but they are set up in that planting strip in front of someone's house, which is, of course. And leads to the homeowner, um, being upset, right, um, that they have a tent in front of their house.
Planting strip is in the right-of-way.
Planting strip is in the right-of-way, but it's not protected by, um, our disorderly conduct.
Which is why we need to do this, so we would add, because of the Parks Protection Act, we have to add parks, and then a right-of-way, and that should take care of it, and still. I would want confirmation from the city, there's still enough options. Uh, for people to go to that don't fall under these other things because of the watershed or whatnot, but it's real list.
So I'm gonna have to look at it, so I can tell you that, um, I mean, I know that, um. When we get calls from people that are, you know, that, that are, if they're, right now, certainly if people are camping in areas that are not. You know, that's a city property, I mean, I've handled the, um, I'm referencing Jared. From the HART program at the county, I know, just contacted some people who are camping on city property. That, um, is undeveloped, it's a parcel that the city owns. And he contacted, he asked me if it was okay, if he contacted them, it was, kind of, they're waiting for housing and no one asked them to move or, you know, they.
Yeah, so you leave them alone until we have those provisions.
Right.
So the proposed, the modified proposal on the table, right? At no time, regardless of shelter space, right-of-way, parks. And they're, yes, and then, uh.
Critical.
Right, but then, and. Yeah, I think the critical areas is now back up in the air, let me set that to the side over here for a second. At no time, no right, right-of-way parks are off limits all the time, regardless of any conditions. When there is shelter space or designated areas available, then the rest of the city is off limits. Yeah, rest of the property, um, but when there is no shelter space available, including these designated areas, then. The non-right-of-way, non-parks are fair game.
That's where we're at.
Okay, so that's on the table.
That does give, um, people that testified immediate relief.
And then, plus or minus, we could add to that or not, the critical area definitions. And if we don't add it, we'd be relying on the existing other protections of critical areas.
There's some that are, like, for example, for the watershed, it's already covered, but I would say that in. Keeping with councilmen were younger, um, keep it simple, critical areas, and I know, councilman, it. I've litigated, I've litigated critical area cases in the development context where a regular person would see a field. And it was only like more biologists.
Forget I mentioned it, please take it off the table.
Yeah, I think so, besides that, uh, two hundred feet is shoreline, or likely enough, it's not privately owned, it's in a park. So, good point, it's, it's already covered.
Well, and there could be other things maybe are in play on some of that stuff too, um, but, okay, so I think Michael and I have our.
Yeah, I think I'll propose, and, and, and mayor, if that was clear, any immediate red flags come to your mind?
Not, not right now, um, and I think it gives us a little time also to discuss feasibility. Obviously, we can't regulate people out of the, the city, and that's not your intent, we, we certainly don't want that, so, um, make sure we have a.
Could we do another, I mean, do you want us to come up with something?
I think, yeah, for next. See if I got the right thumbs up, for next study session. An ordinance that incorporates the definition of shelter space from, that A and B from Auburn, plus the language from Paul's bow about the. Of all the protections, um. With right-of-way and parks off limits all the time, and then the language about shelter space, including either. Like typical overnight shelters or the designated camp, or designated areas in the city.
Michael, did you get that?
Thank you, alright, so we'll pick that up in next study session, um. And that's good, I think that's pretty, it's a solid enough proposal, we could pick at it or small tweaks and bring it to general business, hopefully, for the following week to wrap this up.
Unless you guys completely change.
No, no. But, thank you, Michael, thank you.
Thank you all.
Take a look in their district around your schools, we've got a lot of them, you see something in there that might. Um, backfire or create unintended consequence, more of, probably a better word to put it. Um, so I'll be looking also.
Yeah, I think with, with, with that proposal to make right-of-way and parks off limits all the time. Um, then it would be good to know, get some examples, um, I'm sure comprehensive map is probably too much of a lift, but. Some examples of what that does.
Okay, that's what I can do.
Alright, thank you all for that tricky one. Seeing it's eight forty-five, we keep chipping away at the rules and procedures, but I'm happy to run that to another night. There's nothing else that's critical, alright, we're punting, alright, so we're gonna move on to general council business, B one. Invite logic techs, media chair Denise Frye to provide a summary of the highlights of the kickoff meeting.
Highlight.
Yesterday, August eighth.
Yeah, there was a sixty-two percent increase in LTAC funding available this year. Percent, which means.